Good evening, I want to welcome you and call the order of this meeting of the Forestville ISD Board of Trustees. This date, January the 8th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a forum of board members present. Myself, Joel Odom, Ms. Laina Martinez, Mr. Jason Saboda, Ms. Bana Reed, Mr. Stephen Shawrock, Mr. Marshall Pleer, and Mr. Craig Moose. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Ms. Martinez will now lead us in prayer, so let's stand together, and I will lead us in questions.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your blessing, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Guide us in the matters at hand and help us engage in meaningful discussion. Give us the insight and understanding needed to make the best decisions concerning the welfare of our students, faculty, and staff, and to nurture the bonds with our community. May we invest ourselves in our work and remember that it is you who is working through us. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which there is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Mr. Pleer will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, competence. Our mission statement is, FISD is committed to development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Mr. Moose now will recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin of the board reciting of the FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, applicable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
Ms. Saboda will now recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month, the board highlights one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follows to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month, the board, the code of ethics we are highlighting is commitment to service. I will focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will diligently prepare for and attend board meetings. I will avoid personal involvement in activities the board has delegated to the superintendent. I will seek continuing education that will enhance my ability to fulfill my duties effectively. Our good governance indicator for this month is, the board has written a plan, has a written plan for the review and measurement of board advocacy for the district within the community and with our governmental entities.
We now have some recognition issues for Forestville ISD's students and teacher of the month. Dr. Gilstrap?
Yes, board members would like to turn it over to Ms. Edna Brooks, Principal in North Elementary. Come in, there's some seats right back there, go, Mike, come in and sit down.
Good evening, school board, President Odom, Dr. Gilstrap. I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize the students and teacher of the month for January of 2024. FNE would like to recognize Ms. Casey Homeyer for January Teacher of the Month. Ms. Homeyer is a 2006 graduate of Florisville High School, and after receiving her master's degree in elementary education from Waylon Baptist University, she decided to return to FISD as a special education teacher. After that, she found her true calling teaching our littles in pre-K and kindergarten. She said, "It is important to show my students that I care about them and that they can always come to me for anything. I want my students to be the best they can be and reach their full potential." Building relationships is a big part of Ms. Homeyer's class. Each morning, you will see her greeting students and hugging them and asking them how their evening was. During class, you might observe her setting academic and behavior goals with students and coaching them and helping them track their own progress. One of her students said, "I love Ms. Homeyer. She teaches me letters and now I can even read words." Ms. Homeyer also excels in building positive relationships with parents through regular correspondence, newsletters, and conferences. Parents are confident that their babies are loved and learning in her classroom. Her colleagues say, "Ms. Homeyer always has a smile on her face and is willing to help out whenever needed." She finds ways to make learning fun and engaging not only for her students, but all kindergarten students at FNE. Our campus is blessed to have her, and I am especially thankful for the impact she makes on my personal child every day. I present to you Ms. Casey Homeyer, our January Teacher of the Month. FNE would also like to recognize Camilla Romero McKay as the first January Student of the Month. She is joined tonight by mom and two younger sisters. Camilla is an exceptional student who is full of enthusiasm and has a positive attitude. She participates in our safety patrol program and uses her extra time to read graphic novels, play with her dog, play soccer, and spend time with friends. At school, she most enjoys math class and STEM rotation and is looking forward to participating in more STEM at middle school. Her teachers describe her as, quote, "an excellent student who's very responsible, calm, and sweet. She's an excellent role model for others, both in behavior and learning. She is incredibly helpful and dependable and daily exhibits traits that will help her be successful in her future." Her peers also say, "Camilla is really nice and smart. She always helps me and knows the right answer." In the future, she plans to work hard learning more math since she especially enjoys solving equations and may be interested in engineering in the future. Congratulations to our Student of the Month, fifth grader Camilla Romero McKay. FNE would also like to recognize Trenton Terry as the second January Student of the Month. He's joined tonight by his parents and younger brother. Trenton is an exceptional student who models hard work and focus daily. Outside of school, he excels in playing soccer for the Wilson County Soccer League and is responsible for quite a few goals. He also enjoys playing football with his dog, watching the Premier League, playing video games, and spending time with family and friends. His teachers describe him as, quote, "an outstanding student who puts forth his best efforts in any given situation. Just a pleasure to have in class." Teachers also say that Trenton is thoughtful, compassionate, and respectful to his classmates and adults. Each day, Trenton models being a good friend and an exceptional student. Peers said they enjoy playing games with him and talking to him about video games. In the future, Trenton plans to play soccer in middle school and focus on academics in the area of math with the hopes of one day studying mechanical engineering. Congratulations to our Student of the Month, fifth grader Trenton Terry.
I want to be a little biased, I had Casey in the class, and she was a very good student then. I, it makes, fills my heart to see students that have graduated from Forestville and that have come back. I, when I retired, I substituted one time, one time only, in kindergarten. And that teacher, I told the kids, they were being chatty, I said, "Your pencil and your crayon doesn't talk." Teacher next door came over to see what I did to them. I think just threw them off. But to see how you have grown, getting your master's first, that was a smart move because special ed is a very diligent, hard force. But kindergarten, I think, is just as equally. We now have the bases in it, and developing the relationship and greeting the kids, I think, is very important. Camilla, it is so nice that you're helpful, nice, smart. Math is not my forte, and I hope that you continue engineering and that you are well-liked and you are, with playing soccer and stuff, you have a well-rounded personality. Trent, again, you like the soccer, which is an awesome sport. You have hard-working students and playing video games, there's a lot of people that are doing that. I love how you play football with your dog, I'm a dog. And your pleasure to be in there and be an engineer. And I think it's compliment that, just young, that you have a goal of engineers and because you're both math ability. Congratulations.
Ms. Brooks, give us a tick, you got the one?
Ready, one, two.
All right, y'all come on up there. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next, we have our academic all-state recognitions for volleyball, Mr. Strohman.
Good evening, board president, board of trustees, Dr. Gilstrap. We are so excited as a district to recognize FISD volleyball and football student athletic achievements in the classroom, on the field, and on the court this evening. We are going to hear first from Coach Hoffman, followed by Coach Tackett, as they will recognize these student athletes and their individual achievements. At this time, stage is yours, Coach Hoffman.
Awesome, thank you. Dr. Gilstrap, members of the board, good evening. Today, I'm proud to stand before you all to recognize actually five young ladies from our Jaguar volleyball program, one couldn't be here tonight. Each of these young ladies have been selected to all-state teams for either academic excellence or for their excellence in skill set. Collectively, they bring a combined 17 years of varsity experience, and I'm extremely proud of the representation that they've had of not just Jaguar volleyball, but of Florisville Athletics, Florisville ISD, and our community. Being represented, or being recognized for skill set are Paisley, Pablisca, and Giada. I'm briefly going to speak about Paisley, since she couldn't be here tonight, she's actually at a volleyball practice. But Paisley is a second-year letterman who's amassed over 1,100 kills, 160 aces, and 850 digs in her two years at FHS. This year, she was selected to the TGCA 4A All-State Team for the second consecutive year. We also have Giada. Giada Obregon is a three-year varsity letter. Starting out as a freshman, Giada was a utility player, and she did pretty much everything. She hit, she was a defender, she even became a setter at a certain point. But she's been able to actually transition into more of a defensive player for us and still contributes wherever she's needed. Racking up the following stats to date, over 500 career kills, 150 aces, and 1,000 digs. She was selected to represent volleyball amongst players across the state as a member of the TGCA 1A through 4A All-Star Blue Team. That competition, we haven't gotten information about when that's going to take place or exactly where, but when it does come, we will be sharing. We hope to see more great things out of you, G, in the future, and we're very proud of what you've done and of your verbal commitment to UTSA, in case you all didn't know. So congratulations and keep the greatness coming. And I will do my best to get through the next three. Being recognized for academic excellence are Tori Tackett, Gabriela Rodriguez, and Brenna Bags. So, not only have these ladies propelled their team on the court, they were actually instrumental in helping them achieve recognition as a USMC AVCA Team Academic Award with Honorable Distinction. This means that collectively, the girls had the top 20% of the team GPAs in our division nationwide. Each of these young ladies was also academic all-district every year of their varsity volleyball career. So we'll start with Tori. Tori's maintained a 96.9 GPA and was named as a THSCA Academic All-State Honorable Mention. She's received an academic scholarship to the University of the Incarnate Word, but she's actually still exploring options on which college she hopes to attend. Her intended major is either radiology, sonography, or cardiac sonography. Congratulations, Tori. Next is Gabriela Rodriguez. With a GPA of 99.9, Gabby was selected to the THSCA Academic All-State Second Team. Gabby's received multiple athletic and academic scholarship offers and is still exploring which university best fits her desired goal. She hopes to major in nursing and to become a sonography nurse. Lastly, Brenna Bags. With a GPA of 101.7, it's 101.7, sorry. Brenna was also named to the THSCA Academic All-State Second Team. Brenna will be attending Texas A&amp;M University in the fall with an intended major in nutrition, and she hopes to expand beyond that major, aspiring to become a physical therapist. So, ladies, we're all so proud of how far you've come and the poise that you've done it with. We know the sky is the limit, and we're excited to see where life's journey leads all of you. Congratulations.
Great, so I'll make some comments, I'll start with the All-State recognition academic. It's quite commendable to see how high your GPA grades are in spite of trying to stay in class, go to practice, I'm sure y'all to play on select teams and stuff like that. So it's very commendable to maintain that high of average and be, and be that great at both academics and a sport. It's exciting to hear about why y'all are going to apply to go to college, A&amp;M, still deciding, UIW. That's very exciting for y'all, very proud of y'all. So, it just, you know, it demonstrates your multitasking, your ability to focus and have multiple balls in the air at the same time. The All-State, very, very commendable to have all, I couldn't ride all those kills and digs. I started, I started 500, then skipped another 1,000, I stopped there. Very, very commendable in everything that y'all done and be selected. I think she stood out at 1A to 4A to be selected on a team like that, very commendable. So, very proud of all y'all have represented our school really well.
I just want to say, Superintendent, very proud anytime you reach the level of state recognition. And, you know, not last year, we didn't have any seniors on the volleyball teams. We have any academic all-state, people are coming up and asking me and some board member that, "How come we don't get any recognition for volleyball?" Are they just not? No, no, they're, they're very smart, they're just not seniors yet. So, here we are now, we have some seniors we're able to recognize for being academic all-state. Thank you for your dedication, both in the classroom and on the court, and for the outstanding job that you do. The recognition, and I had not heard this until Coach just said it, about the team recognition, that's really phenomenal, that is very interesting, and I'm going to have to really make sure I get a little bit more information about that because y'all are a big leading part of that, not just on the court, but in the classroom, you showed the way. Thank you, ladies, for your dedication over the years.
All right. Congratulations.
Is that it?
Congratulations, job well done. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Now Coach Tackett will be.
Yes, Coach Tackett, yes, Academic All-State recognition volleyball.
Yes, sir. All right, I assure these guys that I would be as quick as possible because they're wanting to get home and watch the college football national championship game, so. Got five guys here, five seniors that were recognized for academic all-state. In order for them to get that, they, we submit their names and their grades, their GPA, class rank, ACT, SAT scores, and these guys were selected among thousands of other seniors among the, across the state to be academic all-state. We have a couple, we have a second teamer, then we have a couple guys on the honorable mention team, so they, they awarded by three teams. But again, it's just a testament to these guys, the amount of time and effort they put into their, their academics, their grades. Obviously, we asked a lot of time for them to compete in sports and football, and most of these guys are in multiple sports, so it kind of, kind of shows the hard work that they've put in and the commitment that they've had for their grades, so congratulations to them. We've got Brandon Castillo, who was a second-team academic all-state. We have Danny Ariano, who's honorable mention. We have Victor Rodriguez, honorable mention. We have Joseph Fale, who was honorable mention, and Carlos Gels, who's also honorable mention. So, again, it's a testament to their, their hard work, not just this year, but throughout their four years' career. It's not just a, a one-year award, it's a, it's a career award for these guys, so. Great job to them, proud of them for their, for their efforts, so.
Well, I get to say a few words. Guys, I've enjoyed spending time with you guys in the locker room every Friday night. You guys know what you mean to me. It's the most joyous thing that I do, to be honest with you, all year long. I do a lot of things, but to spend time with you guys and to see you grow as athletes, but also, not just athletes, but academically, which is so very, very important, makes me so very, very proud. And I look forward to, when we come in May, to present each one of you, your diplomas to graduate. I'm looking forward to that. Congratulations, guys, I love you.
And Dr. Gilstrap, I want to say too, I've seen these guys at a lot of youth events with the young kids out there and support their events.
They're not just doing academics, they're doing outside the classroom.
One, two.
It's up to y'all. It's going to be real quick. It's wrecking things, athletes. Bring them all. Yep, come on in. Yep, everybody.
Everybody up there?
Everybody, everybody. Heath? Tara? Yeah, y'all take a seat, I want you at the podium. Board, parents, administration, community members, student athletes, I truly have some additional thrilling news to share with you all. Coach Hoffman is up here at the podium, and she is up here for a reason. Dr. Gilstrap and I have been contacted, and Florisville ISD has been selected as the host site for the upcoming South Texas Coaches Association All-Star Games to be held on Saturday, May 18th. Sports included during this day will consist of volleyball, girls and boys basketball, followed by the nightcap football game here at Eshenberg Field. With that said, I ask that you mark your calendar and help us spread the word that you won't want to miss this opportunity to see some of our, some of the area's top athletes compete for the final time in their high school career. With that said, we hope that everyone here tonight is able to join us for this exciting day where we will celebrate some of our own student athletes playing in these, in these games. And we have a coach, Coach Hoffman, who will lead a group of volleyball all-stars to victory. No pressure, Hoffman. As she has been selected by the South Texas Coaching Association Committee to coach one of the two all-star volleyball teams. Coach Hoffman, what an honor. The district, of all of us, extends a heartfelt congratulations to you on this well-deserved honor and opportunity. Thank you for what you do. That's breaking news, by the way.
Thank you for not putting me on the spot at all. Okay, I don't have to say anything.
Do you want a picture?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much, y'all. Thanks, Hugout?
We now have recognition for the MFA Radio Broadcasting Team, order.
Y'all have to bear with me, this is new to me, I've never been here before, but my name is Tara Perner, and I'm one of the ag science teachers at Florisville High School. So excited to present to y'all our radio broadcasting team. They consisted of Arissa Rodriguez, Hallie Orth, and Vincent Cortez. At the district level, they got second place at the Guadalupe Valley District. They have one area, they were first out of 12 teams, and then they were sixth in their heat at state, missing the finals by only one team. The whole point of the radio broadcasting team is to research a current topic related to agriculture and give what some would call maybe like a podcast or a live radio broadcast. We chose to do a script over heat stress in cattle, which is, you know, in South Texas and all around Texas is a pretty prevalent issue that we're facing today. And I cannot commend these kids more. They worked so hard, harder than any kids I've ever coached. They gave it, gave it their all, they made it super fun, they made it their own, and none of these kids have done this team before either, which is super, super cool. And I have two of them graduating, which is a little sad, but Hallie's going to have to find me a new team next year. Yeah, that's, that's a little bit about our success, so thank you for recognizing us.
I want to commend you on behalf of the board for the dedication, the commitment that it took for you to take something that was a new experience for you, something that you'd never tried before, and you were first out of 12 teams, and then you missed, missed the final by one team. You know, that shows a lot about your commitment. And I know that a lot of you are also involved in other activities outside of school for you to have that dedication and, and be willing to put in that hard work that it takes for you to excel, and that way, we're very proud of you. And those of you that are graduating, we wish you the best, and maybe someday you come back to Florisville and you can share those gifts with future students. And Hallie, we hope that you do find those other team members to continue that path so that you can...
January is school board appreciation month, but first, let's review who this school board has. So what does our school board do?
I think our school board makes important decisions for everyone here at our board behind us.
It helps our teachers and students, modern, it helps the teachers teach judge students.
Well, the usual opportunities and things to do.
They have to make the school a safer environment for the children.
They make decisions for our students and teachers.
And with that information, we're gonna toss it to Almira Gies.
Thanks. I want to know what our students and staff have to say to our board and justices. If you can send a link to us, this is our school board board.
I would like to name the school board for always showing up to our students extra creative activities.
I love our school board because they always are super kind and sweet and come up to you and welcome public and thank you, and they think of nice ways to get something of you, especially when you get a little birthday cards.
Thank you so much for all your kindness, your love and your patience with us, your teachers, your students. We appreciate everything that you do for us, taking your time and your effort to make sure that we have a successful season.
You heard it here first. Let's check in with Deputy Mr. Wood for more on our school board.
Thanks, Almira. I'm here to find out what makes our school board awesome. Let's hear what students and staff have to say.
What makes our school board awesome?
What makes our school board awesome is how they try to help out when something bad happens and are trying to assure our safety.
Well, what makes our school board awesome is their dedication and commitment for our students and our staff.
They always think about their employees and they always try to care for us. And also, thank you for giving us all these things we want to say.
What makes our school board awesome is that they put the needs of our students first. They work with us to try to ensure all of our students can be successful.
There you have it. Now, we're gonna hear from Julia Franklin.
Thanks, Deputy Mr. Wood. I'm going to decide to investigate whoever's favorite school board of the year.
Who's your favorite school board member?
They're all my favorites too. I can't say one or the other. They all contribute so much to help the school and the children and that is a phenomenal point to say.
You can claim me, it's basically my name.
I can say that I think our board is pretty outstanding.
Despite what you heard today, I just know we appreciate all of our school board members.
Thanks, Julia. We definitely appreciate our entire school board.
And just to show you how much yours is, I'd like to say to your students and staff, "Congratulations."
Thank you, school board. So much.
Thank you, school board members, for doing this hard voluntary job, and really love that you always think enough what's best for our students, that you always support the staff and ask for our input, so thank you.
Thank you, from the bottom of my heart, for everything you do, everything that you go through, everything that you have to put together to support the teachers and the kids and all of your staff in this district. Thank you. It is very much appreciated.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you, school boards, for everything you do. It's just so good you can do. Everything makes us happy and so much we love you, school board.
As good as our community is, please tell your school board appreciation.
On behalf of all Florisvilleites, students, families, and staff, thank you for your service to our schools and community. Thanks for watching.
So we know who the favorite school board member is. Really and truly from our, our staff and from our students, as you can see, from our community, thank you for your time and dedication. It, it does not go unobserved, and I want to make sure it doesn't go and faint, so thank you very much. That, that video obviously worked with Blanca, but that came from our middle school students who did everything with it. They came up with the ideas, they came, they did all the interviews, they wanted to push that out, and it's, it's one of our new classes that we're offering at the, the journalism classes that we're offering at middle school this year, so that was really driven by them. I believe it, they even edited it. Blanca did the editing. But they did all the video, they did all the content, came up with all of it, so kudos to them, but thank you board very much for everything.
Job well done.
Very nice.
Mr. Petrie, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Alright. We'll now continue with our reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap?
Yes, board members, to be, go through the superintendent report that's been provided in the board packet. We do have to, or do we have, do we have 15 of our TAFI students? Those are our future educator program. We have, do, do have 15 of those students that have qualified for state competition. That competition will be in March, but we want to say congratulations to them, and we will be bringing them into a future board meeting to recognize them for their accomplishments. We're currently in the process of creating a community connections program. This is like a, similar to an ambassador program. Really, it's an opportunity to pull people in from the community, whether they're parents or even some staff members or just community, local business people that want to know a little bit more about how public education works in the state of Texas. We want to give them kind of an inside look at what, what it's like to run this district, and so we, I've been communicating with you, please give me a couple of names that you want to recommend for that program. What we're doing is looking at three meetings in the fall, or excuse me, in the spring, and then three meetings in the fall, and just to kind of cover different topics. Each meeting will be about an hour long. We'll talk about school finance, we'll talk about food service programs, transportation, special ed, we'll talk about all the different topics that people always have questions about, and you try to give them a little more background information. So, if you have not done so, please forward those names to me so we can get that list going and get that program off the ground. It is something a little bit new, it's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, but we're really excited about it. I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize and thank our staff and administrative teams at South, Middle, and High School. Back on Monday, December the 18th, we had a law enforcement activity in the area, and they took very quick action and went into a hole and secure at each of those campuses without hesitation, and the staff and the students reacted appropriately and in a timely manner, and once that was lifted, we were able to communicate out to our community and our parents. So, we, we have those plans in place, we don't ever want to use them, but whenever we do need to activate those, it's good to have. We also evaluate afterwards, what can we tweak, what can we do a little bit different next time to always improve that, so problem those, we'll, we'll make a few tweaks like we did the times before that, but I want to recognize them and say thank you for all that they've done. Also, on Monday, the 18th of December, the high school administration received a call regarding a potential weapon on campus. Immediate action once again was taken by that team. Now, this time was not to go into a lockdown and panic, but to go into investigative mode based on the information they had. They did locate an individual student who did have a look-alike weapon and was quickly addressed, and will be addressing them within the text, or the code of conduct. So, I want to again thank them, the administrative team at the high school for their dedication, their timely response to those issues. The policy committee is gonna meet, we did do a little survey to the policy committee. We're gonna meet on Tuesday, January the 16th at 5:30. I will send that out in an email later on, but we're gonna go over Policy Update 122, and then hopefully, if there are no questions or concerns, then we'll present that to the board at the February, regular February board meeting. This is a legislative session update, so the legal policies are too numerous to name, five, 912 pages, something like that, so the legal policy is quite extensive, but the board doesn't have to adopt all those. There are 10 local policies at this time that the board will consider taking action on, so I did send out a video summary of that in a previous weekly update, so if you haven't seen that video, I encourage you to look through that, and it'll give you some highlights. The Wilson County Junior Livestock Show is starting January the 20th, Saturday, January 20th, concluding with an auction on the 27th, so I encourage you to get out and go see our students, and as they participate in everything from the baking contest, which they're still looking for judges for, by the way, if you want to, if you want something good to eat, and then also ending with the, the auction at the end of the week. It's really phenomenal to see our kids out there, we want to wish all of them good luck, but we also want to encourage our community to, to get out and go see our students in action. I've included some enrollment updates as well as attendance updates, as of, that's prior to Christmas break, obviously, we haven't had school yet, so that was, all those numbers were prior to the Christmas break. Finally, I did not get it into the update, but I did want to inform the board, we've already kind of pushed some information out about it, but on Friday, December the 15th, our Education Foundation did their prize patrol and recognized and awarded a total of 78 grants across the district, and this year was $128,471. That is a phenomenal total. Tonight, in our consent agenda, we do have their donation to cover those grants, but that is really outstanding, not only to our community and their dedication, but to the Education Foundation and everything that they do, the time and effort they put in to not only do the fundraising, to award the grants, to, to go through those, to make sure they're on the point of what they're trying to achieve and being innovative in the classroom, and then to take the time to go out and recognize each teacher individually with the big checks and everything like that. Our, our staff is always excited about prize patrol coming by, and so this year, 78 grants awarded and over $128,000, really a phenomenal job. It's, it speaks to our, our commitment as a community, commitment to education in Florisville. If there are no questions, that's the update.
Dr. Wade will now give us a calendar development.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, board members. Tonight, I will share with you the process of our development of our school calendar and the current status for the 2024-2025 school year. So, IFISD begins the process of developing our calendar each year by researching other district calendars that are available at this time, not everyone has a calendar out there yet, to determine any trends and gather ideas. The district leadership team then is surveyed for priorities, and our calendar committee meetings begin in October to review draft calendars and make recommendations. Two final draft calendars are shared with all staff in the month of December into January, and then our District Education Improvement Committee will meet at the end of January to also provide input, and then finally, we will present a calendar to you next month for consideration and approval. This year, the district leadership team identified several priorities, which continue to be planning time for our teachers, making sure we're observing some holidays instead of having that holiday be a professional development day, getting input from our staff, and making sure we get school before Memorial Day. That's a common theme. Just so you know, the calendar committee is made up of representatives from each campus and central office. This is the group that finalizes the two draft calendars that presented to all staff, and there's the list of all the members for this school year. The calendar committee was also surveyed to determine their priorities. I thought this was interesting to share with you. Overwhelmingly, the committee's priority was to begin school for teachers in August and get us out by Memorial Day. Next, the priority was to have some time off at Thanksgiving and Christmas. After that, the priorities were a little bit more scattered, but I just put them up here just to see, there's some about maximizing instructional days, professional planning time, and then a four-day work week was also listed as potential for our priority. Both the district leadership team and the calendar committee also provided input on specific professional learning. The majority of both groups wanted two trade days, which is what is in all the drafts that we've created. Trade days are contractual days where staff have attended training maybe over the summer or on a Saturday, and then they use that in lieu of a PD day throughout the school year. Of note also is 77% of the district leadership preferred that staff have one day of professional learning every month. One of the draft calendars does have that with the exception of December, March, and May, because those months have long breaks of Christmas, spring break, and the end of school. And then also, the majority of the groups wanted a day of planning after winter break, which is included in all the options. And then specifically, we have some constraints in development of the calendar. We are starting, our start date prior to the fourth Monday of August, because we have a district renovation that allows for that. We are required to identify days for bad weather makeup. Teachers have contracts of 187 days, I have to make sure I count that every year, because you know, for those of you who've been on the board, I messed up one year. We try to balance the testing days in, in the semesters. We are required by law to have 75,600 minutes for school each campus, and then we also want to, as you saw the priorities, have professional learning days throughout the year. So, the calendar committee reviewed area calendars that were available, and when I say area, all the way down to South Texas, because not everyone has those released, but we are also confined for spring break because of our participation at Alamo Academies. We have students in the Alamo Academies where they're there half of the day, and then they come back, and so if we were to take a break and they didn't have a break, our bus drivers would have to keep transporting them, so we try to align it with Alamo colleges. The committee also reviewed four initial calendars. Two of the options that were presented to them were a traditional calendar, very similar to what we have this school year, and I will say, the committee was very thankful for the calendar this year with all the embedded professional development days and workdays that we've been providing. Last school, we also had two options for a four-day week, because that was something that was discussed. The four-day drafts did require us to increase the minutes for, just so that you know, at the elementary schools, since that 75,600 minutes is a mandate, right? So, when we had those calendars, it said you were gonna have to increase the minutes by 10, 20 minutes a day. So, as I mentioned, the four draft calendars were shared with the calendar committee, they made recommendations, and we ended up with one traditional calendar and a four-day option. So then I surveyed them, the committee discussed the four-day option, but decided to pursue a traditional calendar for this next year. So, since that was their input, we created, asked them to create a second traditional calendar, so we had something. They really struggled with that, but came up with a different option, and so a survey has gone out to staff to get their input, and today's the last day for that. There's also been discussion about Peanut Festival weekend, and so this year, we had a Friday that was a professional, no, it was a day off, and we had a football game that night, and then Monday was a holiday, if you will. So tomorrow, another survey is going out to the team, to the staff, to say, which do you prefer? You want the Friday off, or do you want the Friday to be the PD day? Which, and so we'll just take their input on how we organize that weekend. So, in December, the final two drafts are shared with all staff for input, which I just said that was sent out. We've had 200 and... And then specifically, we have some constraints in development of the calendar. We are starting our start date prior to the fourth Monday of August, because we have a district renovation that allows for that. We are required to identify days for bad weather makeup. Teachers have contracts of 187 days. I have to make sure I count that every year, because you know, for those of you on the board, I messed up one year. We try to balance the testing days in the semesters. We are required by law to have 75,600 minutes for school each campus, and then we also want to, as you saw the priorities, have professional learning days throughout the year. So the calendar committee reviewed area calendars that were available. When I say area, all the way down to South Texas, because not everyone has those released. But we are also confined for spring break because of our participation at Alamo Academies. We have students in the Alamo Academies where they're there half of the day, and then they come back. And so if we were to take a break and they didn't have a break, our bus drivers would have to keep transporting them, so we try to align it with Alamo colleges. The committee also reviewed four initial calendars. Two of the options that were presented to them were a traditional calendar, very similar to what we have this school year. And I will say, the committee was very thankful for the calendar this year with all the embedded professional development days and workdays that we've been providing. Last school, we also had two options for a four-day week, because that was something that was discussed. The four-day drafts did require us to increase the minutes, just so that you know, at the elementary schools, since that 75,600 minutes is a mandate, right? So when we had those calendars, it said you were going to have to increase the minutes by 10, 20 minutes a day. So as I mentioned, the four draft calendars were shared with the calendar committee. They made recommendations, and we ended up with one traditional calendar and a four-day option. So then I surveyed them. The committee discussed the four-day option, but decided to pursue a traditional calendar for this next year. So since that was their input, we asked them to create a second traditional calendar, so we had something. They really struggled with that, but came up with a different option. And so a survey has gone out to staff to get their input, and today's the last day for that. There's also been discussion about peanut festival weekend, and so this year we had a Friday that was a professional, no, it was a day off, and we had a football game that night. And then Monday was a holiday, if you will. So tomorrow, another survey is going out to the team, to the staff, to say, which do you prefer? You want the Friday off, or do you want the Friday to be the PD day? And so we'll just take their input on how we organize that weekend. So in December, the final two drafts are shared with all staff for input, which I just said that was sent out. We've had 240-something responses, we just looked today. The next step is to bring the counter committee recommendations to DIC at the end of this month, and then finally, next month, we will bring that to you. So that's the process. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Dr. Wade, I just have one question about, you mentioned about the Alamo colleges and transportation and running buses and all that, and I guess I just have a question about the age or, how many students, you have an idea how many students that would be?
It's less than, I don't think we have four. Yeah, it's less, sometimes we've had 12.
Well, my guess is, you know, if we're, are we transporting them?
Yes, we transport.
Every day?
6:00 AM, I think they get up and head that way, and then they come back.
That was it, just not bringing them to school, and then they're having a different transfer. We actually are taking them.
We are transporting.
But it's not, it's just a.
Is it one of like a little bus or something, or a road?
I don't know what bus.
I'm not sure of transportation, Mr. Ramirez, maybe you'll answer that.
Yeah, no, we do our smaller bus for community, obviously, just so we can.
It's just a handful.
Yeah, it's just a handful, so we don't use any of our big buses.
Okay, thank you.
Until July.
Right, but it takes a staff member and those kids if they were not, didn't have a break.
So the one thing I will say is this year's calendar, you really don't know it until you go through the calendar, and so now, teachers and staff members are starting to go through this year's calendar, and they're recognizing the number of breaks that we have, the number of days we have PD where there's no students. There's one of those every month, there's also a day off every month for the entire district, and so the staff is starting to see that, and now they're kind of halfway through the year going, oh, it's been nice. Every time I start thinking, man, I'm dragging a little bit, boom, you got another day, boom, you got another day. So I think, I think there's been a lot of reflection as we get into this year about how good this calendar is, because we really, this is another one of those benefits that we talk about with our staff of, you know, we gave them two conferences, we did a couple other things, we want to try to do everything we can for our staff, and the calendar is another thing we can do. So I forget how many it was, I believe there's a total of 16 weeks throughout the year that students only have four-day weeks, 16 throughout the year. So obviously, some of those require staff to be here on that fifth day for some PD, but I think this year's calendar has been pretty good so far. The feedback's been well.
We got a lot of thank yous for us doing the December 22nd, that was, I got phone calls and she's an old crazy lord, they were going out of town, and you know, that was kind of an oops, but I'm glad.
It was good. So it sounded like it was easier to put the proposed calendar together based upon the reflection of the one we have. Plus, I'm kind of surprised the four-day week was that low, which is good.
We discussed it, pros and cons, but I just felt like this was not the right time.
I get more cons.
I get a lot of good feedback from Wade, you know, the days off, the way we're spending on this, this last year's calendar is even better, so everybody's very happy with it.
Out of the 240, I believe it's 245 responses to the survey, we obviously have a comments section at the end, there's been 43 comments left, and out of the 43 comments, six people have said, what about a four-day week? So six people out of 43 comments, which is out of 245 responses, are even asking questions about it.
Give them more top office a crab event at four-day week.
Well, they're able to see too, with our neighbors, how it's working out, so that puts a lot of perspective.
And we will also see what the legislature does.
More to come. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, board. Just want to give you an update on where we were with the calendar. Dr. Gilstrap? Presentation of the master facility. Yes, I'd like to call up Mr. Casey Sledge, board members, just to kind of go through, if you want to click on that next slide there. There we go. Board members, just to kind of refresh your memory, back last year, the board came together and we did some strategic planning, and we did our goals and objectives, and one of those goals was strategic resource management, goal number four. And within that includes facilities, and so based on that, we began this process of trying to get to this point. So really, what I want to do this evening, the purpose of this, is to kind of reflect on where we've been, make sure you know, and our community knows, that, give you a little brief update of where we are, and obviously, this is not a final product tonight, the final product is pending later in the spring. But just to kind of go over a few things, we did put together a long-range planning committee, we included Blue Gene Consulting, some of you might have been involved in that process. We had four different meetings at that time, and I believe we had 40-plus members in that committee that took part in that process. Go ahead, next one. And then they, from there, they identified five facility needs, and I'm not going to go over those, these have been presented to the board in the past, but those were five needs that were identified. But that same group also made a recommendation to the board, two different things. One was to address overcrowding at the elementary campuses in a timely manner, which we've taken one step in opening this campus, that was a huge step, to kind of meet that need. And then also to select a firm, which we reached out to Sledge Engineering to do three different things, conduct a facility study, a capacity study, and then obviously combine those two things into a long-range master facility plan, which is kind of where we are now. So I want to make sure that, you know, back in July or June, I believe it was late June, whenever the board adopted that plan and really started giving it to the administration to step forward and start going through. So we engaged with Region 13 Sledge Engineering, they've walked all the buildings, they've met with administrative review at different campuses and talking to different departments, whether it be transportation or food service, all of the athletic departments, and then we had another plan ready to go. That 2034 date up there, I believe we're wrong, I just noticed that. We're going to November 14th, 2034, I will be retired.
I might be.
That's a real long.
He said we don't need that time.
Put it on your calendar, we're having.
See the expectations.
I'm going to turn it over to Casey Sledge, with Sledge Engineering.
All right, I'm Casey Sledge, board member, Dr. Gilstrap, ready to be here. We're very happy to be in Florisville working. I do need to start out pointing out that one of our key staff members, Bobby Topper, is our lead planner, and he's been in charge of this project, which is to your benefit for sure. He was going to be here tonight doing all the smart talking, but he actually was up in Colorado and it got snowy and he could not make it. So the bad news for you is, you get to talk to me, and I'm quite familiar with the plan overall, but I do not have the detailed information he has, so you get to stump me tonight, probably, but you don't have to, you might have to do that. But for your final presentation, which this is not, he will absolutely be here, will be here, and you'll appreciate why I'm talking about him that way, when you see him. So let me tell you about what a strategic facility plan is, and we will give you a little sneak peek into what we're thinking this evening. And I stress enough, we're in the middle of this process, a little past the middle, and so we're not done. Everything you're going to see tonight is still draft, and so we're working it out. Not everything that you're going to see is going to remain the way it is, so you're again going to see it mid-straight. But to help you and anyone that might ask you about strategic facility planning, a lot like that name sounds, we've got a lot of strategy into facilities. What we're really trying to do is connecting the district's vision, that's your vision. Where do you want to go? How do you want to teach? What do you want to teach? Connect your vision to the facilities that you have, and then come up with a reasonable plan that's a practical plan, an affordable plan, not just pie in the sky, and develop a working document that you can use from here forward, every year, a bunch of time for the board, we would hope that you would pull this plan out and use it to make decisions. It really should be a basis for any facility decisions. One of the main goals, from your point of view, and Dr. Gilstrap has brought this to you, or is bringing this to you now, is that you'll have a document that will prevent not knowing how to make decisions with plans, or having a hodgepodge plan develop. Most K-12 campuses end up with one administration, one board makes some, you know, decisions with facilities. Some years later, there's a different administration or a different board, decisions might be a little different. It's hard to stay on course, right? Even with the best of intentions. So this plan hopes to be a living document, or a legacy document even, that stays beyond even this board or this administration, I'm trying to say it, but it will be there for the future. And it's a, it's a planning document, so it should change, right? You need to change it as you go. Every year, you should look at it. Every few years, you might want to bring us back to take another kind of professional look at it, if you will. But that's what this document's about. Again, I want to mention reasonable and practical. The final document is going to have cost estimates for everything we're going to show you. I can show you costs tonight, we're in the middle of developing those costs, but we're going to have that, and the final document's going to have priorities, because it's a lot of information. This is every piece of land and building that you own, every square foot of it, and what you don't get, what should you be building? All that's going to come out. So it's a lot. Tonight, we don't have prioritization of costs, but that's what you're going to get, and that's going to be a whole lot of good information to see. Okay, makes sense? All right. So now that you know what one of those is, I'm just going to give you a snapshot of each of these. Feel free to ask questions, but I really want to just give you the gist of what's happening. And again, these aren't necessarily final. You're going to vote on this later on, all of this stuff, and staff's going to see some more of this. We're going to go back to the administration team, we did this month, and really recap a few things. We met with the committee, we got a lot of good information, and some of that's reflected here, some of it is not yet. So this building, I look familiar, it's where we're at right now. In short, DIC is parsing out the admin area to some degree. One of the recommendations that we're talking about on this campus is to essentially move admin out to allow more room for education. At the core of that is, it's generally cheaper to put admin somewhere else than it is to put elementary kids or, you know, ECC kids somewhere else. It's not the only way, but that looks like the smartest plan, again, to be cost-effective down the road. We would also connect the vestibular outdoor right now, we will look at connecting that, and quite a few other minor details like playgrounds and whatnot. That is the gist of this campus, and later we'll tell you what that might cost and how to prioritize that with your other projects. Rushing forward to North Elementary, this campus, the primary item of the general improvements in most every campus would have security improvements, technology improvements, there'll be a whole section on that in your final report, and it'll go into some detail with pricing. Tonight, I'm just going to kind of brush over that, because it's throughout, you'll see, you will want to do that at every campus. The heavy hitters are a classroom addition, at this campus, that number two, probably going in that area. This isn't a design, it doesn't have to be at that location. Our drive right now is to make sure it's reasonable, and we create a budget that you could pull this, pull that off, but it's not the design. Another notable item is improvements to the speed drop-off area. Not the biggest financial problem to deal with, but an important item for that campus. So identify that. And little spoiler alert, I think you all know, but take note of the area outlined in green off to the side, all that vacant land that you own. Talk about that in a second tick, so we've got some thoughts on that. Jumping to South Elementary, and then I'm going to transition a little bit.
We're still in North.
Hold on, change this one, let it change. Thank you. See, Bobby was here, he was. So to South, what we heard from the committee is a lot about campus sizing and how we're going to deal with that. This current screen here, I think it's going to change, but we talk about some improvements and such as renovating the gyms to classrooms, building a new gym that gives us more capacity. And that's a fine plan, okay? However, and let me also say, your district has really good buildings compared to just about every district we've seen, and I'm not exaggerating, we've probably done 40 of these in Texas for 40 different districts or so, all over the state. And there may be just one other district of those 40 or so that has just solid core structures, good bones, if you will, and that are maintained to this level. So really, good kudos to everybody for that. That's important, because it's actually going to end up saving you money from a planning perspective, because you've done a good job in the history of buildings, made good things, and not cutting corners in the past and taking care of your maintenance, so kudos for everybody doing that. Okay, well, here's South, we've got playground equipment, some miscellaneous projects, and again, the main item would be a new gym and renovate the old gym, turn it into classrooms. That's a way to get more capacity on this campus, okay? And I like that, that's a, that's a fine project. But let's take a slight sidestep, right? Here's a good time to do it. So how do we want to handle growth? How big should each campus be? Maximum number of students do you want at a campus? What about your student-teacher ratios? And then what about the different age groups? How do you deal with that? So our final report's going to give you a lot of detail, you have a lot of text, you have a whole chapter on this, but generally, there's, there's a couple paths. One way we could just do additions at each elementary campus, and your middle school, make them larger. Certainly, we just keep getting bigger and bigger to some point, but there comes a spot where that becomes more inefficient, particularly administratively and other ways too, that your core spaces aren't really set up to be that big. And so what we heard from the committee was, the maximum they would like to see at an elementary campus for its number of students is about 1,000 students. In fact, 900 would be a lot better. You know what? 800 would be even better than that. And I concur with all of that. Even if, even if you didn't have facilities that we're talking about, just the sheer number of kids, I am not an educator by any means, but we've talked to enough of them, and thank you all for your input, and at some point, it's just too many kids we need to split out. It's difficult to administer, and they can all, I'll talk for that, I think, pretty well. So we listened to that, and we thought, kind of stepped back and took a little bit of a different vision. How can, what's another way that we can get there? And I don't have a lot of slides to show you here, but if we'll think of a different pattern, and let's talk about your feeder pattern, where you go elementary middle all the way up. If we were to eventually, when you have the numbers that justify, not today, remember, we're looking, we're looking down the road, so we can make good decisions today that fit you down the road, and then we'll figure out how to transition to that. But if you had, well, the vision that I've got for you is, if we went back to, that's just one way to do it, let's go to North Elementary's campus, let's look at the acreage you have out there, past the solar farm, they're kind of on the right. If we build an intermediate campus here, a new campus here, in the shorter term, it would be, there's a lot of ways to do this, but it would be fourth, fifth, sixth, for example. As you continue to grow, now, and that would take pressure off the elementaries, right? As you continue to grow, eventually, that would turn into a middle school where it would have six, seven, and eight in it. Of course, you don't have to do that, but that would be the vision, that's very much the same type of campus almost than athletics. But the vision would be that you eventually would have another elementary, you would have three elementaries, two middle schools, and one high school. That is a really good feeder plan, really like that plan, the committee really liked that, responded to that. Well, you're not ready for that next week, next year even, but if we want to get there, and I think that's where we're going, that's where the committee was going, and staff was going, we need to think about how to do that now. So one of the ways, instead of just going back to South and just starting to add more capacity, not a bad plan on its face, but maybe the better look is to consider this intermediate plan. You'll only have so many funds at some point, right? And so where you put those is important, that's why the prioritization is going to be so key. All that makes sense?
So really, we're looking at, this plan is about 10, 15, 20 years. This is not a plan for next year, like you just said, or the year after, this is something.
It will be based on your growth.
Correct.
We'll check it out, we've got, in the report, there's growth projections from the demographic report that you've done, and plus your historical growth, we'll look at that. So we'll be forecasting out, but y'all will need to monitor every year as growth changes. Y'all know, growth is going to change. You're going on this level of growth one day, it's going to spike, probably, right? Because of where you are, I mean, look at the rest of Central Texas. So you're going to react to that every year, and you might ramp up the plan and whatnot. So yes, this is a long-term plan for sure, on purpose, intentionally, and what I'm liking so far, and we're not done with this, but the concept of creating an intermediate is really a stopgap to help you get to where you want to be longer term, cost-effectively, without building a building and leaving it later or something like that. It's, it's an option to just expand to your other campuses, that's not off the table. But what we're in the middle of figuring out is, it looks like the dollars are actually probably cheaper to do this option than go expand each campus. I think your staff's going to like it a whole lot more. So we're not done, but that's where we're, that's where we're heading, so.
So there'd be one for the South and then one for the North intermediate, is that what you're saying?
One intermediate, another intermediate.
What's one intermediate?
Eventually, down the road, there would be a middle school, in essence, in town, and another middle school out.
Okay.
In town.
In town, yeah, you got to have that vision to see that. And when we do the final report, we'll kind of display it a little better, so it's a little easier for everyone to follow, but again, just giving you some shots at what we're thinking. So that conversation we just had, I think, is really just, it's a key to this process and this plan for Florisville. I'm very excited that that's come up, and that's. I'm very excited that that's come up and that's just, that's why we like doing these plans.
If you were to add on North and South, you run into the concerns about the number of kids on campus. Let's say you put another 500 kids in South, so you're pushing 1,500 at South.
Traffic.
Well, now, let's say now we get down the road where we need the middle school, the other elementary. And so now, we gotta go out and build two buildings and now we take kids and kill them out of South, well, now you got wasted square footage itself. Because if you, if you built it for 1,500 and you don't have 1,500 in it, or close to it, you're not maximizing that space. So if you add on and then move out of it, you're gonna have wasted space.
Yeah.
Plus putting pressure on the administration, but the facilities.
The facilities and infrastructure.
It's almost max already, so the whole new school relieves all of that pressure.
You would stress your infrastructure for sure. Your core spaces like kitchens and cafeterias are already stressing. And if you add, they're just gonna get worse. So yes, yeah, great recognition. Okay, so that was the good sidebar. That's really important. Just back to the preview of the campuses. So this list on the middle school is not necessarily assuming you're doing the intermediate plan yet, so it's gonna modify a little bit likely. What you'll see on it, though, is we've gotta deal with traffic either way. Right now, we've got plenty of traffic to deal with. That's kinda brushing over it this evening, but we've observed the traffic and got some, got some ideas. But weight room additions, because you have those tiny weight rooms. Walk bridges, just to get to that grass there in the back, relatively small, but important item. Now, a cafeteria addition, if you don't do the intermediate school plan we talked about, you probably need this cafeteria addition pretty quickly. But if you do that plan, we need to really think through with staff, because whenever that's gonna happen, you might not wanna invest in an addition, because you might not need it. Because you're taking a student count down in this campus. Of course, the PA building clock, that's public address system, that's the technology. At the high school, what's going on? Because we've got a big campus, what a campus. Number one on the list, this is not your priority, it's just number one on my list right now. There will be priority given to you, but not today. It's literally just the one. New auditorium.
Yay.
So we did hear about this one pretty quickly. Generally, our thinking is it should go where the current auditorium is. That location makes a lot of sense for a lot of infrastructure reasons. So we're currently thinking if we go down there, it'll totally fit. Let's talk about the size just for a second. Just a quick comment on sizing. Some of the, you know, how many seats do we want? Some of the feedback we heard early was, oh, 1,200, how about 1,000, 1,100? And you can get whatever you can afford to build, okay? However, a quick comment for you is generally, when you get over roughly 800, if you ever take some. You start to get such a big area that it's either too wide or it's too deep and you have to go to a balcony. And that is a huge financial jump. So unless you really, really, really wanna spend a whole lot of money on 1,200 seats, do something in the 800-seat range, it's gonna be our recommendation to you. And have just a much lower building. Quick example, just to give you some scale of that, an 800-seat building might be, depending how we build it, might be an $18 million building, give or take, right? Last year's number, so it's probably more than. To the same level of niceness, a 1,200-seat pack might be in the 50 million range. It's a massive jump, because the structure's entirely different. You're just really jumping levels. So not because we don't want you to have more seats, but, and it doesn't have to be exactly 800, but somewhere in that range is a much healthier, cost-effective move. It could be 850 or whatever, depending on the design. All that makes sense?
Just make the backstage bigger than two feet. I was the theater teacher here for a long time. I mean, the curtains, I mean, the backstage is like this.
I have three theater kids, I don't know who you're talking about. We actually have that square footage in here already and we're assuming that. So yes, we would have like an appropriate back area and the proper width stage for UIL and everything else. So big idea there is a new auditorium, some entry work, didn't own the old gym and auditorium, renovate the 800 building, a little interior connection to that 800 building. Relatively minor. A really good item to talk about is courtyard improvements. Everybody familiar with courtyard? Did it rain today? I've shared the video of the gutter, or like gutter, of the rain. I've shared that with a lot of people. They're like, where in the world was that?
Good thing is, it does not water. It drains off.
It leaves, doesn't it? It's like a water pump.
Like you said, what was it? The civil engineer got it right, but the structural engineer.
That's right. Civil engineer got it right. We're not flooding.
We could have a swimming class now.
Oh, we should add that. So we've got a lot of ideas. We really wanna turn that into some type of amenity and go from, you know, maybe a little bit of an albatross to something that we can be really proud of. Not just on good weather days, right, other, other times too. So something, and I, I will, I will comment, Dr. Gilstrap and I have talked about this a few times. A lot of campuses now, due to safety, you know, changes and the way we're thinking about buildings and architects are designing them. We're seeing where architects and school districts actually put courtyards in their new campuses. Typically, that's, you know, in Texas, we get away from that a lot, because of heat and all the things you can experience. But from a security standpoint, generally, you can call that a win, because you can, you know, kinda block it off. But what we've gotta do for this campus or the high school campus is turn that into that amenity. So shade, you know, not just all concrete, do something different, make sure it still drains and whatnot. So I'm excited to see what we'll come up with, but we're gonna create some budgets to take, to make that courtyard be renovated into something really possible. We're currently thinking of replacing the old, old old ag building with new ag building for CTE space. Not to give you more square footage, just to replace the old. We tangle with that one quite a bit, because we're, we really like to renovate a lot, but we kinda crossed the line on that one, thought, yeah, maybe it's time to start fresh on that. And an item that's, that could happen down the road, that moving the sped area, the students up to the main building, that's something that we talked about quite a bit. It's not a huge cost item, but it's a planning item. So that's something on the final report, we'll get into the pros and cons of that, how to pull that off. Truly just a relocation of that function and additional parking. I mentioned traffic. You don't see the number here, but traffic's gonna be included in all this. Athletics, we've got bleacher expansion there on the home side and really kind of operational maintenance items, resurface track score, ward, sound system. Turf and tennis renovations, relatively lower cost items, except for the concession restroom, the dressing rooms that we're planning over baseball softball. So those would be some sizable price items. And then just talk about administration overall, some items that have been thrown out there, additional R key, just an admin R key for the public to get information. A new central administrative system campus, because of what I mentioned earlier about this campus. It's not that we're trying to throw money at administration necessarily. We wanna get everything we can to the teachers and the kids and the students. But, but to do that, I think we're gonna end up, you know, recommending that you head to a new campus somewhere. One of the spots we're thinking is actually, a slide ahead, is where your current bus barn is, if you'll build, add equipped maintenance area that you need. Also, that might give us an opportunity and a pretty good location for having to go there. And then I mentioned district-wide technology upgrades and communication upgrades as well. The maintenance transportation center, just really out of date in that, that facility and size over there by the high school campus. I'm gonna go take a picture. So. Y'all, y'all know we're just, we're not done with this. What thought would be if, if and when bus and maintenance moves, we think on property you own over there, just to the right of all spring. That might be a really good physical location for an admin campus. We got a lot of options for admin campus. Your admin's not really tied to a lot of other things or rules, so we can be flexible with that. Doesn't have to go there. It's just something we're evaluating right now. We haven't budgeted out yet, so we need to get through that. Come get us. So that was my last preview slide. Next steps are to come back to this board, February or March, whenever we're all ready.
Correct. What we'd like to do is, obviously, y'all know we have to have a team of eight training. We typically do that in the spring, so we're looking at trying to do that in March. We're looking for a date, working with Green 20. So we can have Sledge Engineering come out, present to the board the final product, which is a very robust plan, 90 plus, 100 pages long. So it will take some time to go through and doing it in a board workshop is probably the best way to do that. That way, there can be a lot of conversation about it. We can do that as a team of eight training, knock two birds out, one stone in one meeting. So we want to try to do that in March and then come back in April and make a final presentation to the board for approval at that time. And then, once the board adopts that long-range facilities plan, then we really start breaking that down throughout the summer. We come back in the spring, or excuse me, in the fall and to start taking other steps and planning what we wanna try to do. Here's our plan. We've got an adopted plan for the next X number of years, 10, 15, 20 years. Now, how do we get there? How to get there? What kind of funding do we think we might need to be able to get there? So that's kind of the next, next steps, but really, what we wanted to do in this meeting is give you an opportunity to see where they are and also give some input. So if y'all've got any questions or comments about the kind of the direction they're going, please feel free to, to share or ask.
The transportation, we don't, y'all aren't looking at that right now. We're just talking about moving that out, but that's not included in y'all's package, or is it?
It would include this.
Every facility you have. So yes, sir. I just, I didn't have a lot to say tonight. We're actually, we're talking earlier today, we're looking at the new building to you again on that land.
Updating everything, yeah.
Oh, yes.
We could actually get some buses in there, maybe drag them up.
Yeah, I think the vision is pretty, pretty simple. It's pretty direct on that one. What I don't yet know is what's that priority of funding gonna be? When does that, is that more important than other things? Where are the faults? We're working on it.
Any other questions or feedback?
So when you're looking at the transportation for all the districts, I mean, you're thinking everything, kinda where it is now. If you add an intermediate, what does that do at the intersection of 181 and 775 and all that? And along with that, logistically, we're trying to plan buses. Does it make sense? Do we have two different bus locations? That makes sense. We're not traveling all the way from the city, all the way out to North and stuff like that. So that's all in your consideration?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Great, great comment. This person's over there.
Some districts that have large geographic areas have those substations?
Right. Okay, makes sense.
Oh, that makes sense. And if the bus has trouble, then you got a central located.
We would have one for a maintenance shop, but we would have another one for secured storage, few lanes, some other things like that. All right. Mr. Sledge, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
This evening and giving a little presentation, giving us a little budget. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You did a nice job, son.
Look forward to seeing you in March.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is the consent agenda. Yes, board members, we have a typical consent agenda. We did have to add in some financial numbers at the last minute because of the new year break. But we do have three donations on there that I want to draw your attention to. One is for $117,760.17. That is from the Education Foundation. That covers our grants that were awarded back in December. So we wanna make sure we extend to the Ed Foundation our gratefulness for that. Also, we have two donations from our Athletic Booster Club. One is in the amount of $9,009 for some girls' cold weather gear. Obviously, those, that's for every girl in the program. They'll now have some, some warm gear to wear during the cold weather. So we can make sure they're working out all the time. Also, from the Athletic Booster Club, a donation of $4,046, and that's for some dugout renovations and improvements in the baseball field. We completed the softball field last year on the inside with some nice benches and some cabinetry and all that kinda stuff. And the baseball team really got a little jealous. And so the Booster Club has stepped up and is gonna donate some, some items to really renovate theirs and get it up to par with softball. So we do have those three donations. Thank you to Athletic Booster Club and to the Ed Foundation.
Make a motion to accept.
I'm sorry, I made a recommendation. There's no questions. I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Any further questions?
Second.
Any further question? All the favor levied, nobody raising your hand? Anyone opposed? Monsieur Carey, 70.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
You're waiting for him?
Yeah, I know, everybody's looking.
Next action item is to consider approval of innovative course by Dr. White.
Good evening again. This year, we began the implementation of a new CTE program study called Exercise Science and Wellness with the help of an additional athletic trainer. Kinesiology II is an additional course that's needed next year to support this program study. Kinesiology II is a TEA-approved innovative course, but it can only be offered with school board approval. The application and the teaks for this course are included in the board packet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is the same person to the teachers one is gonna teach to you?
It could be either one of them.
Okay, all right. Mr. Currie?
So other than the additional costs that's noted in your protective, that's really all of theirs?
Because we already, we already have enough of the staff.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, administration recommends the board approve the offering of Kinesiology II, a TEA-innovative course, beginning with the 2024, 2025 school year.
Motion to accept administration recommendation.
Mr. President, move to accept administration recommendation.
And I second.
Disagree. And I second, Mr. Green. Any further questions? On the paper, nobody raising your hand? Motion, Carey, 70.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White. The board will now convene in the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, Act 756 PM. No voting will take place in the closed session. In the action the board wishes to take as a result, discussions in closed session will take place after the board convene in the open meeting. The board will reconvene now into open session at 8:35 PM. Will now consider approval of action item number 7A, consider approval of personnel, as discussed in the executive session.
Board members, we'd like to make a contract recommendation for appointment toward Jared, Jared Shaw, in a teaching contract.
All right, we have a motion to.
Move to accept administration recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, second. Mr. Green, so, all right, any further questions? All the favor levied, nobody raising your hand? Motion, Carey, 70. All right. More members? We got adjourned. Not concluded our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further business? Hearing now, the meeting is adjourned at 8:36 PM.